Going on throughout the school division. Finally, you know, we're here at the precipice of another budget cycle. And I want to thank the staff for everything that they're doing now and everything that they're going to do in terms of preparing us to be able to have a budget that's not only sustainable, but it's restorative and also innovative. We've said all along that the strategic plan is the focus of our, of all of our planning, and we want to make sure that our budget properly matches what we intend to do. And so there are some old themes that I want to continue to press in terms of restorative teacher slots in targeted locations to make our learning environment much more effective. I am excited to have the opportunity to provide restorative services to parents so that they have an opportunity to get their children the best opportunities available by having money to apply for colleges and money to do all the other activities that are required of our students. And, you know, reduction of fees and other things of that nature are going to be beneficial to them so that they're able to do that. And so I'm looking for significant reductions in activity fees, but I'm also looking to see innovative things that the superintendent has talked about throughout the year about magnet schools and instructor or training our own or an academy for upper level personnel. So I'm looking for a budget that is not only innovative in that approach, but also restorative. And that does line up with our strategic plan for not only short term, but long-term growth. So with that being said, and I know I said a lot, I turn it over to you, Adam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Ms. Grant.
Well, I'm eager to start this work session, so I will go to Ms. Blaylock.
Other than to echo Dr. Meyer's sentiments about Paris and Mr. Braswell's comments on Veterans Day, I was very pleased with what I was hearing from the schools and enjoyed my ceremony as well. I pass. Thank you.
Mr. Laura.
I had the opportunity to attend the Cortland game on Saturday and on Friday night. And it was one of those things where I walked in there and I said to a couple of people, the Cougars would probably score three touchdowns in the first half and three touchdowns in the second. And sure enough, they scored 42 points and three miles up the street. The Panthers managed to score eight touchdowns and score 56 points. I wish both teams well. Two great organizations. And speaking of football, in the game of football, when someone is injured, the rest of the team stakes a knee. And I consider myself a knight going back to my first time I saw the Spotsylvania Football Team play back in 1962. And right now, my buddies are hurting. And so I'm on one knee because of Ian and Jaylen Brown. It's going to take me a while to get over their untimely death. And unfortunately, I've seen too many of our kids get killed on our roads. And a number of schools out there have a program called two-on-two, meaning two eyes and two hands on the road. And I don't know if that's going to help. I don't know what can help keep our kids alive, but in any event, it hurts. And also the situation that made the paper, our kids are hurting. And if I seem a little quiet tonight, Madam Chair, it's simply that I'm a little saddened by the recent events, including what Dr. Meyer and Mrs. Blaylock mentioned, the situation in Paris. So all in all, these are tough days. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. And being that we do have a kind of a busy night ahead of us with our budget, I'm going to skip over any comments that I had this evening as well and move on to item 4.01, Presentation and Highlights Regarding the 2017 Budget Process. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm going to, at this time, invite members of my executive team that are going to be presenting tonight to come and take their seats. And as they are doing that, hopefully, we'll be able to get a presentation online. One of the things that we are attempting to do tonight, and hopefully, it will, it will work, is to try to connect what we have done in the past in terms of a lot of various presentations. But as has already been alluded to, the focus in, on the connected nature of all that we do to serve students in Spotsylvania County, we want this presentation to have a connected feel to it. And so the presentation now has come on to me, even though, there it is. Okay. Not that I don't like looking at myself on the big screen. This will be a little bit easier on the eyes. So I'm going to see if that's working. Oh.
Just go back to where you were before.
Right here? And? There we go. Okay. I think, so that everyone knows, Mr. Braswell had not seen or reviewed our presentation in advance, though you would have thought that he had in some of his opening comments regarding what I have captured here as part of our executive summary and just reacquainting the school board with what I perceive as some of the major recurring budget influences and themes, things that are going to continue to influence the development process, but also themes that we have captured over the last couple of years and we know are going to continue. And I think right off the bat is that we take a systems approach to any of our processes, in particular, that we make sure that our budget processes and the strategies are aligned with our division's strategic plan. As I will outline briefly, that we have increased differentiated needs of students, staff, and the community, quite different than maybe we did even five or 10 years ago. That we are currently studying in a comprehensive nature our potential future growth, which we know can have an influence on the budget. That two big pieces of every budget for us in public schools are the investments of resources and the investment in compensation, since the vast majority of our budget goes towards compensation. Restorations and reallocations, I think Mr. Braswell was dead on, that we look at areas where we have been compromised and we have had to cut back over the last several years as a result of the Great Recession, as we have begun to incrementally restore those through the great work of staff and this school board. We have also looked for areas to address differently through reallocations and continuing to fine tune the use of our resources. As always is front and center, I'll also highlight in a little bit that we have an uncompromising focus on student learning and achievement as the primary driver in all that we do. It comes down to what is happening for students in the classrooms and how we are preparing them for their future. Economic and fiscal trends, realities, things that we know that we must look at. Ms. Gaines later on will be highlighting certain economic and fiscal trends that we know will impact and influence how we develop the current FY17 budget. And I think another theme, and it's centered around this room, and I include the board in this sentiment, that we want to build and maximize leadership capacity. And I thank the board in advance for the prominent leadership role that you have taken in developing these budgets and in being sensitive to the visionary aspects of it, as well as the programmatic parts of it. We also know that we have to continue to work smarter in strengthening our partnerships. We cannot work in a vacuum as a public school system. We have begun to expand our efforts in seeking grants and working with businesses, and we need to continue to strengthen partnerships across the organization to strengthen our ability to meet the needs of our students. And finally, I will also end my piece before transitioning to the instruction portion, that educational legislation reform is, there are some profound happenings that you all have been made aware of in developing your own priorities that are unique to not only this century, but I think the modern era, as we are beginning to look at accountability and assessment quite differently here in the Commonwealth. And that will certainly influence how we budget in the future. So you know we're the 11th largest school district. We remain there out of 132, and that certainly has great implications for how we plan because we are a large school division, whether you're talking about Virginia or other parts of the country. Recently updated budget and operations numbers, most of those you are familiar with. Facilities enrollment and class size, some of that will be highlighted in greater detail later, including class sizes, and we will go in a little bit more detail during the instruction portion of that. But just a reminder of the facilities and the technology that we have in our school division. I used this slide and another slide. I wish I could have gotten all of our schools onto one slide, because what I'm trying to illustrate here is that we aim to be a school system, a connected group of schools that work in concert and work systemically to prepare our students to meet the mission of this organization, to make sure that we are working both horizontally and vertically to meet all of the needs of our students. And even though each of our schools has its own unique features, we want them to be working as part of our school system to meet the needs of all of our students. And there's our middle and high schools. The staff makeup is pretty much what you have seen over the last several years. I will talk a little bit more in a minute about the student body makeup and some of the changes that we've had. We have talked about this in the past year to year. This year, I want to take you back, thanks to some recent data that has been shared with me through our finance department, to give you an indication of where we are respective to the last decade. And then based on our 2015 graduates, here are some other data, particularly like to highlight the continued increase in our on-time graduation rate, the continued lowering of our dropout rate, and the continued increase, ever so slightly, in students earning a passing score on AP exams. And of course, a big highlight of our last year was both the validation and the strong feedback that we received through the district accreditation process through Advance Ed. Hopefully, you'll be able to see this even better on your packet than you can on the large screen, but going back to 2005, we have been able to show some pretty significant changes in who we are as a school division relative to populations and demographics. And as you can see, we are part of what is also a statewide trend, though for us, some of those increases and changes have been even more dramatic. Particularly, I will show you back in 2004, over 75% of our student population was Caucasian. Today, just under 60% of our student population is Caucasian. We have seen a significant increase in our Hispanic population over time. It has a little more than tripled since 2004. And another category of two or more ethnicities has also emerged, has become a new part of the data for both the state and the localities. Another key piece has been, again, a statewide trend as well as a local trend, but the increase over time of students who receive free lunch, and that has more than doubled here in our school division. So our change has been even more profound than what the state has seen, and also an increase in students receiving reduced lunch. As I talked about earlier, a lot of what we want to set the stage for is we engage in a budget process. The purpose of the budget process is not to be an isolated set of meetings and processes to come up with just a general outcome. It is intended to be connected with why we exist, what we hope to accomplish, and how we can best accomplish it. And so I bring you back to what our general, and it goes back to the early, the mid-part of the last century, the Plan Do Study Act systemic structure, and that is how we seek to do our work. I bring you to our vision statement, because I'm going to talk about the importance of us continuing as we are looking at budgets year to year, which I have alluded to before, that we have found ourselves, especially with the scarcity of fiscal resources, we find ourselves trying to function year to year in developing budgets without the ability or the capacity to sometimes look beyond one year at a time. I'm hoping that we can continue as a governing body, as well as the staff, to let our vision for the future help guide us to looking beyond one year into what the next three to five to 10 years will look like. We also know that, as I talked about, the diversity of our students and their needs, we want to inspire and empower all of our students to develop those kinds of skills, creative thinking, problem solving, effective communication, not just be able to regurgitate information or to demonstrate short-term comprehension. And how we want to do that is by making sure that we have a classroom and a school environment that's engaging and supportive for all learners, by providing a broad spectrum of innovative learning opportunities, and as Mr. Braswell alluded to, continuing to expand to areas that we need to be, make available for our students, as well as making sure that we're enhancing our current core programs. And then the partnerships piece, that is all a critical part of our vision for the future. And just a quote to again reinforce that I've often said that, or used the quote by Jim Collins, that good is the enemy of great. And so if we are to strive for greatness, not only in our own times here in leadership, but for the future, we have to look beyond just the here and now and make sure that we are lifting our eyes beyond what our constraints are and continue to fully develop that vision that is compelling for the future. And we must have a way that we function. We have to make sure that we are grounded in how we conduct our business. You've seen these core values, student-centered leadership, accountability, cultural proficiency. We know that we haven't arrived, but that we want to continue to let these be our guiding values as far as how we function. One of the key ways, and I'm going to continue to talk about these in our organization, because the more that I go around to schools, the more that I work with staff, I'm beginning to see the three big ideas of professional learning communities coming to life, in classrooms, during planning, across departments. The focus, that laser-like focus on a learning, both for students and adults. A culture of collaboration where there isn't another alternative, that the way that we work is as a team and we work together to ensure that a focus on results is not in vain. And we find that many of our school teams, as well as department teams, focus on these four essential questions, how we do our business. What is it we want our students to learn? How will we know if each student has learned it? How will we respond when some students do not learn it? And how can we extend and enrich the learning for students who have demonstrated proficiency? They sound simple, but they are actually a lot more complex when it comes to meeting the needs of every single student, depending on their different ability levels. So we use that as a guiding framework to try to do that work better each day. And here are our broad goals in the areas of teaching and learning, preparing all of our students to be college and career-ready. And we know that that doesn't mean exactly what it may have meant in the past. The standards are higher, the economics are more challenging, and now there are more different types of pathways for students to be competitive in the job market, both in careers and college. And we want to make sure that the learning experiences they receive here in Spotsylvania County are helping to prepare them for those next steps. And we know that the foundation of all that is going to be able to be sustainable comes with making sure that our community is engaged and partnering with us to make sure that we can meet the needs for our students. And then finally, we know that learning cannot occur unless we have a safe and orderly environment that values diversity, that is caring and healthy. So as I'm getting ready to turn it over to our instruction folks, I bring you to Stephen Covey and Robert Sblane's comment that the main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing. And I, you know, it's at this time in the year that I can find myself, as any of you would, that the budget is like putting kids in a candy store. The problem is, we don't have enough money for all the candy. And so we have to discipline all of ourselves to keep focused on what that main thing is. And the main thing is, what do our students need each and every day? Mr. Braswell has often talked about the main effort. The main effort is teaching and learning and leading, and those are the things that we need to keep that focus on. As I talked about with learning changing, we know that as we go into the budget, and you'll have a variety of reports, this cartoon talks about the changing nature of how our students learn and how they perceive learning should be taking place. And how do we make sure that the learning experiences at school are relative, given that so much information can be accessed by students outside of school now? How do we engage them really in a more of a 24/7 dialogue and interaction? And then as we promote critical thinking, I came across this, and yes, I did see the Peanuts movie recently, so it was, brought me back to my childhood, but I was looking at this, realizing that we have to continue to promote that critical thinking, I was saying in our vision statement, that kids have a number of different responses to a number of different questions. And we need to realize that in this current reality, there isn't always one right answer, that students have to learn to think more than to find themselves getting to that final answer. But it's more about the thinking and the process of it. And so I appreciate it, and I don't think that Peppermint Patty is well off the mark on that response. One of the ways that we are trying to tie all of the focus on 21st century learning together is the work that's being done across instruction and with the schools and making sure that we have a clear instructional framework to tie all of our classroom learning and professional development together for the future. More to come, more to come on that. And then finally, I said that one of the final influences, though it is a significant one. one, and some of us will learn a little bit more as we go to the upcoming VSBA conference, but that we are seeing a lot of different arrows, as I've talked about before, coming together in terms of legislators, the governor, the Department of Education, and educational practitioners, parents, students. Everyone is coming together to say that, right now, we have an overemphasis on standardized testing. And I think that this cartoon talks a little bit about how some students, and I have talked to many students out in the schools, and this is how they perceive sometimes the relevance of their learning. So we want to continue to move away from that, and I'm optimistic that we are beginning to. And I think we will all follow carefully how the SOL Innovation Committee continues to make recommendations, how the legislation is lined up with the idea that we want the assessment and accountability system in Virginia to continue to change. And so I end with this final quote, that when you lean your ladder against the wrong wall, you paint the wrong wall. And I would submit to you that though there have been some positive results from the present accountability movement, we've seen curriculum be more aligned, we've seen a greater focus on all students in terms of different subgroups, so it has not all been in vain, but there comes a point where you're no longer achieving what you set out to achieve. And so I am excited that we appear as the, in the Commonwealth and here in our school division in moving into a new direction. And I'll now turn it over to Ms. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, my colleagues and I are hopefully going to clarify some of the following discussion points. We're going to review the federal accountability or state accreditation, going to talk a little bit about student support services, as well as support for our schools. I will apologize on the front end that some of the slides that you are about to see are, should not be new to you, as we have reviewed these previously, but it is important to reference them to make it make sense for the community as well. So I apologize on the front end. In regards to our federal accountability, the SOL pass rates are established for all students, as well as broken down into subgroup performance. The federal requirements are met in one of three ways. You can either meet or exceed the benchmark that is provided, you could reduce the failure rate by ten percent or greater, or you could also meet or exceed the three average, the three-year average pass rate. And high schools also have a little extra in regards to the federal accountability. They must meet the FGI, or Federal Graduation Indicator, of eighty percent. And it is important to remind the board for FGI for federal, that is only standard or advanced diplomas. So this does pose a difficult and extra measure for our schools to attain this. So according to the federal government, the accountability groups are broken down into the ALL, that is considered a group in of itself, and then there are three gap groups. Gap Group One, which contains students with disabilities, our English language learners, and our economically disadvantaged students, unduplicated. Our Gap Group Two is our students that are considered to be black but not of Hispanic origin, as well as Gap Group Three, which are Hispanic students. We also have individual subgroups for the federal accountability, and those are also the students with disabilities, ELL, ECD, white, and Asian. So in other words, the top three, the top three students with disabilities, the English language learners, and the economically disadvantaged, that was Gap Group One, but they also count individually as well. Oh, excuse me. Virginia was required to propose an accountability system under the waiver for No Child Left Behind. So No Child Left Behind does still exist, and this is still the current waiver that we are experiencing. The chart shows where Virginia began, when the increase in the math rigor, which is the blue box, and the red box displays all the categories for the students, and they must achieve a seventy-three percent by the school year of 2017, 2018. So you can see that the blue box going to the red box varies quite different, differently depending on your gap group. And that is the visual of the trajectory that the gap groups must attain. And you will notice that the bottom line, not that I expect you to see it from there, but I can just show you, the bottom line is blue, which is the students with disabilities, and they have a forty-point difference in order to make that seventy-three leap by that school year. This is a similar chart to the math. This is the reading AMOs, and you'll notice by the endpoint, the difference between the reading and math, the math is seventy-three, the reading is a seventy-eight. So for example, for our students with disabilities, they have a forty-eight point increase that they must achieve, which is even greater than the mathematics. The intervention tiers from the state is in response to the federal standards. So in other words, the federal government lays out all of the benchmarks, the state must have a way to support the schools that are not meeting those benchmarks, and it is a tiered approach. The top two, priority and focus, are a designation that is only relevant to our title schools. So for Spotsylvania County, that is something that our nine elementary schools could be in those two subgroups. Priority status is a total of thirty-six schools in the entire state of Virginia. It is the five percent lowest performing schools for the category of ALL. So it's the subgroup called ALL, and it would be the bottom five percent. Moving on to focus, focus is a total of seventy-two schools, and the seventy-two schools would be low performance in the gap groups, so gap group one, two, or three. Those gap groups would be impacted by the focus status. You will recall that last year, Spotswood Elementary was considered to be a focus school, and we'll talk more about that in just a moment. And then the bottom tier is an improvement plan. Any school, whether they are title or non-title, if they do not meet a federal AMO, is required to have a school improvement plan. For us in Spotsylvania, we require all of our schools to have a school improvement plan, so we automatically meet this tier because it is best practice to continue to do that Plan Do Study Act that Dr. Baker was referring to earlier. So in regards to Spotswood, Spotswood made substantial improvements over the 2014-2015 school year. They met every federal and state accountability benchmark that they laid out before us. And it's important to note that due to the focus designation requiring two years, that Spotswood Elementary is still continued to be designated as a focus school, even though they exceeded every benchmark that is possible. It's just a requirement as a two-year program, so they really want to make sure that they sustain those results before they will remove that identification. That's correct. The second year, they have to meet the benchmarks or have reduced the failure rate by ten percent.
This is a different places where I insert an opinion. And my opinion is that Spotswood Elementary does not meet criteria to be designated as focus. They have exceeded that, and I just want to make sure that that resonates and allow that to permeate across the room because they have not just improved, they no longer, if this was the first year, that if they, this was their data last year, they would not be a focus school. And I think we just need to make sure that that's clear. So a lot of credit goes to the leadership there, as well as their staff and community for the job that they did over the course of this year.
Thank you. In regards to the federal accountability highlights in the area of mathematics, as a division, we realized an overall mathematics pass rate increased by seven percent to eighty percent. It is the first time that as a division, we have passed the state average in mathematics. Performance in all of our gap groups increased by at least three percent, and as a division, we did meet all of the federal requirements for math. In the area of reading, our pass rate increased by four percent overall to a seventy-eight percent. We did realize a, at least a three percent increase in all of our subgroups. And as a division, we did meet all of the FAMOs for reading, with the exception of our LEP and SWD subgroups. Although both did show gains, we have not met the FAMO for this accountability year. So I wanted to show the board a little bit what those achievement results were. So for our students with disabilities, this chart shows the performance area on the first column is in regards to the content and last year's score, and then the, I'm sorry, it's 2014, and then last year's score, which is our current school year accountability measures. And then it compares it to all students in Spotsylvania County. And then the last two columns show what Virginia expects, and the last column shows what the federal government expects. So you can see that for our students with disabilities, at a forty-two, the federal government, the category we're in right now, expected a fifty-four. In math, we achieved a forty-six, and we certainly needed to get to a fifty-seven. So we still have work to do in that category, as well as our LEP, or Limited English Proficiency students. This past year, we had a fifty-one in reading, and the federal annual measurable objective was sixty-one, and sixty-three for math, and we did meet that one with a fifty-nine. So that reading is holding us up for the LEP students. This chart represents the pass rates for reading and writing, and it is a three-year trend. I'm not going to go through all of that individually, but I did want to just draw your attention to noticing that we are seeing and realizing some improvements in the area of reading, as well as overall as a division in writing. So that's federal accountability in a nutshell. So we're going to move on to state accountability. State accountability, the requirements are met in one of two ways. You can either meet or exceed that current pass rate benchmark, or you can do the three-year average pass rate. Unlike federal, the state does not allow a reduce the failure rate by ten percent. The state is a straight, did you meet, or did you not meet, or did you average that? So it does not allow a ten percent reduction. High schools also do have to maintain a point value of eighty-five or greater, based on the graduation completion index, and this is where you do receive points for diplomas other than standard and advanced diplomas. So this one is one that we have realized for several years now. The state accountability criteria has not changed in quite some time. Across the board, all of our testing grades need to get a seventy-five in English and a seventy in math, science, or social studies. The changes to state accreditation, the column on the left are the former accreditation ratings, and you will realize that, you'll notice that last year, we had schools that were considered to be accredited with warning. This year, we have new accreditation ratings that I'm going to break down in slides because it is a little bit complex. So we still have fully accredited, and then partially accredited is the slide that I'm going to, in the next slide, break down a little bit more for you. Accreditation denied is, that's a, if you are no longer partially accredited, then you do have, that is still out there. Conditionally accredited is only for new schools. So if you started and opened a new school, the state will allow you to be conditionally accredited until you have some sort of assessments. So partially accredited are now six different categories within partially accredited. Yes. Each one, you have partially accredited approaching, or improving, or warned. So they break down graduation and pass rate in each one of these. So you have partially accredited approaching benchmark graduation for your complex index, your GCI, or you have partially accredited approaching benchmark, the pass rate itself. You also have partially accredited improving graduation completion index, as well as improving school pass rate. And then you have, the final is warned school for your graduation completion index and warned school because of the pass rate. Right. Yes.
If I, if I may, one of the things that I am aware of in terms of, though there are more ratings and there is greater complexity to it, I think the initial intention is more of a bridge between where we have been and where we appear to be going. I believe that these accredited accreditation ratings reflect the desire for the state to point out where schools are improving, rather than it being an all-or-nothing proposition every year. And so though it is, there are a lot of different ratings, I think what we had previously, where you were either fully accredited or accredited with warning, we have seen, even this year in our school system, schools improve by as much as ten to fifteen percent, and if they still haven't met the benchmark, previously, they would be called accredited with warning. So now, to at least be acknowledged for the improvement, I think is part of trying to make sure that not only school divisions are recognized for improvement in schools, but that communities and parents can recognize that there's not necessarily something wrong with a school when it is an improving status, it is actually going in the right direction. So it's to reward that good work. I believe that's a lot of the intention behind that.
I just wanted to briefly say, I was at the board, the state board meeting when this was introduced to them, and this is exactly what they said, was, "It is a shame to not accredit a school, to schools, when they are showing tremendous growth, but they're still not at that benchmark." So the board members really did like this because it is, it does, it does show that we're looking at growth, as, that they're looking at growth as well. It was wonderful.
And we do actually have a school, one of our schools in that exact situation that I'll review in just a moment. Last year, you will recall that we had ten schools that were considered accredited with warning, six were elementary, three were middle, and we had one high school. Currently, this year, twenty-seven of our twenty-nine Spotsylvania County public schools are fully accredited. Two are considered partially accredited. Riverview Elementary realized a thirteen percent gain in reading. They went from a fifty-eight to a seventy-one, and so they are considered partially accredited improving school pass rate for English. So they're just shy of the benchmark, but had a substantial increase. So they received that category. And Post Oak Middle School is considered to be partially accredited, warned school pass rate in the area of English. This is the history of accreditation for Spotsylvania County public schools. Last year, you may recall, there was a very large list of about ten years. We trimmed that down to five years so that really you could see where the test itself changed, and you can see that the, where I italicize and bold where the test began to change, and you can see from 2013, we had a ninety-three percent of our schools fully accredited. Last year, we had sixty-six percent, and we are back up to a ninety-three percent. This is the history of accreditation in Virginia. As I said below, before, we realized that our, ninety-three percent of our schools were fully accredited, whereas this past year, seventy-eight percent of the state of Virginia is fully accredited. Last year, we were sixty-six, and the state was sixty-eight. So the state had us last year, but this year, we had a very strong comeback, and we beat the state in regards to the fully accreditation percentage. The percentage of districts fully accredited across the state, as Dr. Baker said earlier, there's one hundred and thirty-two school districts, twenty-eight percent of Virginia by district is fully accredited. At the high school level, all of our high schools have met the graduation completion index. As I said previously, twenty-seven out of twenty-nine schools met the accreditation rating in English, and twenty-nine out of twenty-nine have made it in the area of math. And we are going to move on to our student support services, and we will have Ms. Richardson take it from here. Ms. Richardson?
Good evening. Thank you. All right, here's an overview of our December first child count for students with disabilities. You can see that our projected count for this upcoming year, because we're currently in in our December 1 window, our capture date is actually Tuesday, December 1, but there's lots of work to be done on the front end with making sure we get eligibilities completed, that annual documents are up to date, so on and so forth. So we are looking at an increase. That was our current count. As of Friday, we were sitting at 28, 23 for students with active eligibilities and IEPs. Here's a snapshot of our student population for students with disabilities, based on the information from 2014 that was submitted to the Virginia Department of Education. Our largest groups that we are serving are those with specific learning disabilities, other health impairments, speech-language impairments, students with autism, and we've also grown in the category of students with developmental delays. Here's some of the challenges that we don't often get, get a chance to talk about, but as board members, it's important for you to recognize that any time we get an in-state transfer of a student that's already eligible for special education services, our state regulations obligate us to match those services as they are currently written. So if a student has a service that we don't typically provide, or a level of support that's not currently available within their school setting, then we do have to work to meet those services. For out-of-state transfers, we have a little bit of flexibility with what we're able to provide. We work to align those services to meet the students' needs. To, to date, we've had 50 high-needs transfers that have either required a low-incidence program, so that's a program for students with intellectual disabilities, emotional disabilities, or autism spectrum disorders, or they have needed a private day or residential setting. Here's another challenge that we don't talk about. As a public school division, we are obligated to support screening opportunities for our kindergarten population. And along with that is an impact to supporting our kindergarten students with being prepared for school, with, with school readiness skills. And we also have to do mandatory speech-language screenings for our kindergarten population. It's also important to note that our preschool population has risen, and the staffing standards set forth by the state are a lot more stringent with, with regards to caseload and case management. Our hourly support needs to students with disabilities, it's important to note that since we had stimulus money back in 2008, we have seen a need to be very creative with how we meet the needs of our students with, with disabilities. So here's an overview of what we, we did support in 2014, 15, and what we currently have now for 2015, 16. There is a reduction there because in late August, you all were gracious enough to approve that we take some of those monies and convert them to FTEs. So we were able to add more special ed teaching positions with a focus at the elementary school level. And there's an overview of some of our new programs across the school division. I had a conversation with Mrs. Grant prior to starting, and we do have a need for some more program recommendations for the FY '17 school year, but there's a snapshot of, of how we're doing in special education. And now I'll hand it off to Mr. Wolf and Mr. Mudd to talk about supports to schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. What Mr. Mudd and I are going to be talking about today is some of the support for schools from the instruction department. As Dr. Baker had mentioned previously, prior in this presentation, was a, a focus on curriculum and curriculum alignment. You will see in this first slide, in regards to that, is some of the things that we've done for strategic support to our schools in regards to literacy, adopted literacy curriculum at 3, 5, and also aligning our curriculum guides up through Algebra I as well, that we found to be very instrumental in that process and engaging our teachers and staff in that process as well to align that curriculum. You'll see for this year, we've worked on some English and science, and also literacy and writing from K-2 to K-5 respectively, and then we're investigating curriculum for the middle school. It's important for us to, to make sure that this alignment of this curriculum is, is present. As we looked, Dr. Baker had mentioned about the collaboration that takes place amongst our teachers. Well, it's important that everyone's on the same page when they're looking at the standards inside of the classroom, so that we can come out with a common understanding of what this curriculum is intended to be for our kids. Some of the strategic support for the schools, some of the things that, that we have done collectively in instruction is, we worked with redesigning our school improvement plan that Ms. Flannard had mentioned earlier. This time, our plan, our plans used to be one year, go ahead and do a plan, one year, go ahead and do a plan. Well, we've redesigned that entire process now where there is a, a three-year sort of look, where you can set your targets and goals for where your plans happen to be and where, what's the vision of your school for the next three years. So you'll set your targets this year incrementally. But we also go further into the plan where the teachers, along with the administration and their other teams, design goals for that plan, but they have checks along the way, both quantitatively and qualitatively, that they can, through CFA development, which is Common Formative Assessments, and anecdotally be able to speak about the process and the progress that they're having inside their plans, but also knowing at the same time that they're fluid in nature. And if we need to make an adjustment to your plan on what's best for kids, then, then we do that. So, and we meet collectively as an instruction department to go ahead and discuss some of the, the strengths and the areas of growth that we feel could be used inside of that plan. So it's, it's very much a fluid process, and, and it needs, we feel as though it needs to be, and we've seen some, some good success with that thus far. We've also expanded, you'll see, some purposeful and intentional instructional coaching. We have added some math specialists at the secondary level, and, that have come out of some Title I and Title II and Algebra Resource Funds. So we're able to go ahead, I'm sorry, Algebra Readiness Funds, that we're, we're able to go ahead and target specifically the needs of our, of our children, but also to ensure that our teachers are being coached in those best practices that have the best sort of results for our students at the same time. The last bullet that you see up there is provide tiered support for the schools. That's where we come in, and that's the fun stuff for us. We really dive in with the schools. We go out, we take a look, we go on tandem observations with the administrative team, and it's, it's, what did you see inside the classroom? This is what I saw. Here's what you should be looking for. And what we have found, at least through our process, is that we're seeing greater discussions about the written, taught, and assessed, and that language coming from our administrators collectively across the board as we begin to, to approach, or begin to dive a little bit deeper into what curriculum is and what curriculum alignment happens to be, but to get a consistent message, not just for elementary, but across the board with secondary as well. You'll see on the next page about some of the teaching allocations that we were able to go ahead and secure with the assistance of, of this school board last year for us in regards to some of the teaching positions you'll see at the middle school. Through the allocation of those nine middle school positions, we were able to free up our reading specialists at the schools, which is very huge as we attack literacy across the board of what that looks like for our kids. And also, we can't forget about those students who need assistance, who are on an advanced track, that we need to make sure that their needs are being met at the same time. So the allocation of those positions was instrumental for us to go ahead and do that this year. You'll see that there are also 12 teaching positions at the elementary, and some of the targeted areas in regards to fine arts and PE, to lower some of those class ratios inside of there, so that they can target and build the skills of those children as they come up through the grades.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Now, Mr. Mudd's going to go ahead and talk a little bit.
Good evening. I'm just going to share briefly about current class sizes at the elementary level. This first slide here, you can see our school year 2014, 15 did have class sizes in total that were slightly larger than where we are at this point in this school year. You'll also notice a concentration at keeping class sizes lower at the K-2 level as best we can when compared to 3rd through 5th grade. As far as the impact of the positions added, specifically the positions added at the classroom level, 13 of the 17 elementary schools this school year have a lower people-teacher ratio in the current school year when compared to 2014, 15. And I apologize, on the second bullet on your copy, it says six additional teachers. The number on the screen is correct. It's actually five additional teachers. Five additional classroom teachers were added at the elementary level, which enabled schools impacted to maintain those class size averages of under 23 to 1. In addition to that, a para educator was added in October of this year at one school that was experiencing a larger class size than typical to support. And that, that para educator is specifically there in that grade level to support small group instruction in both reading and math. Of the schools, of the, of the four schools that do not have the lower pupil-teacher ratios this year, those schools increased this current year by less than 1%. So it wasn't a tremendous change for those schools.
And if I may, I know that Mr. Wolf is also going to share some of the impact, but just as a, an insert here for the board, I, we have deliberately, in this presentation, made sure, because I understand the amount of effort that goes into one budget year to the next, and how sometimes you need to be reminded of what we've been able to accomplish. Last year was the first time in, in recent history that the school board was able to approve an increase of teaching positions and resources for the classroom. And so I thank staff for making sure that you were able to visualize and perceive the, the current and ongoing positive impact of those positions that you approved.
And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wolf at this point.
So I talked about this briefly already, but the impact of the added positions, especially at secondary, is that the addition of seven English teachers at the middle level has allowed us to free up reading specialists and target literacy initiatives for struggling readers. And in most schools, these additions have allowed us to open up the opportunity for scope teachers to work as well, that I had mentioned previously. But I wanted to also point out that these two positions are critical for us to service the needs of students at both ends of the scales, because back in 2007, 08, reading specialists and scope teachers at the, at the middle level were taken more or less out of support roles and put back into the classroom at that point. So now, at this time, we're able to go ahead and, again, not to, to beat a dead horse, but it's really to service the needs of those students at both ends of the spectrum. The next thing that you will see here is the average class size for this next slide and the, the one after, for middle school and high school. Now, what you will notice is that we incorporated a number of, of those nine positions that we saw went towards English and math. But what it did was, it wasn't necessarily affecting the average class size at that point. It was to bring people out of the classroom to service the individual needs of students that way, and replacing them with an instructor. So it may not seem as though the average class size didn't go down, and it didn't make an impact, but I can assure you that it has, and it, and it will continue to go ahead and do so. You will notice that the impact of, of positions across the, the division at both the elementary and the high school level can be influenced by the addition of a, of a position. You will see at the middle school level specifically, physical education going down from 34 to 1 to 32 to 1. Well, I point out specifically physical education because it, it took a, a average class size at one of our schools down to 28 to 1, which was up to 38 to 1. So by adding a position and doing that as well, we were able, it's still a lot of students running around inside of a, a PE class to ensure that that takes place. But on our next slide, you will see for our, our average class size for high schools. And this is not to indicate, although you may see some of these numbers, when you're looking at an English class, that you see an average class size of 22 to 1. It does not mean that there aren't classes out there sitting at 28, 29, 30, okay? This is simply the average class size by taking all of the classes across the division, elementary and middle at the same time. So as, as Mr. Mudd reflects his numbers, it's taking all of the classes and, and ensuring that those numbers are averaged together. But it's not to say we don't have hotspots, because we certainly do. So. And then at this time, this does conclude the presentation, and we would be open to any of your questions, or comments.
Mr. Laura.
I'll thank all of you for your presentation, and you have presented a very positive outlook. My question is general, and any of you that choose to answer, you're welcome to comment on, on my question, and, and that is, what do you see, strictly from an academic standpoint, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing Spotsylvania School Division today?
I think there's a number of challenges that we are facing. One is to make sure that literacy is our number-one priority pre-K through 12, and that has to be the main thing, keeping the main thing, because we need to have our students to be literis, literate on multiple levels, whether that's written, oral, our communication skills are paramount. I also believe that we need to make sure that we are reaching all of our students, and that we have our most needy students in challenges in regards to our students with disabilities, as well as our LEP students, according to our data, our areas that we need to continue to focus on and to continue to provide supports. And the changing of our population, as Dr. Baker noted, in a very short time, 10 years is, is not a significant amount of time, and to have the significant amount of changes, it does require a lot of professional learning for our staff to feel equipped in order to support our students and the diversity that they bring, and that we embrace that. We just need to make sure that we're supporting the learning for the adults, as well as the learning for our students. So I could go on and on, but I'm sure Dr. Baker might want to add a few remarks to that.
I, I think that some of the challenges are, are time and resources, and I also think that some of them are, are cultural. You know, trying to make sure that as a school division culture, that sometimes it's great to have a vision, but then you have to have the means and the ability to do that in a, in an expedited fashion. And I think that, I don't know if it's so much a challenge as it is that I think we have a team of leaders across the school division at our schools, and, and I would include our teachers and staff, who, I talked about building leadership capacity, and I think a lot of it is, the, the challenge is making sure that we are moving as a whole system, and that we're not just having pockets of excellence or areas where we are achieving, but in other areas, we don't seem to be connected. So some of it is, is like moving a, a big ship in the same direction. But one of the things that Ms. Flannard was talking about is, we take for granted in these times where we've had to reduce budgets, one of the first things to get reduced in a budget is professional development. You know, funding to support high-quality professional development. So we have an internal way that we try to make sure that each and every day, our adults are learning to do, that we're learning to do our jobs better. But a lot of that is on, within the school day, job embedded, and that is certainly, we want that to continue to be our bread and butter. But to advance at other levels, we need to be able to bring in other levels of professional learning and professional development, and afford our staff the, the time, perhaps the compensation, and the resources to be able to adapt to not only a rapidly changing set of needs that our students have, but really a rapidly changing educational system, and one that continues to raise expectations on both our students and our, and our educators. So I know that's a mouthful, but...
Madam Chair, thank you. I, I do have another question, but I'll, I'll wait. I want to give the rest of the board the opportunity to ask questions, and I'll come back, if you'll come back to me later.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Dr. Meyer.
I think one of the things that I observed when we were visiting the schools, and it came really to mind, was we had a chance to observe Spotswood Elementary and their program, and in talking with the principal, you know, it became obvious to me that when you have a well-oiled machine and it's working real well, you have all your players together, with one person gets sick, and then how do you fill in and still maintain, you know, the progress that you're trying to achieve? And he, and I asked him that question, and he said, "I really count on having substitutes who know what they're doing, who can step right in and keep the pace going and working with the students." So that a substitute is not daycare, a substitute is improving learning. So I think the challenge is going to be for us, is how do we sustain the growth that we've seen this last year? we've seen this last year at all levels? We've taken on 59 additional new people whom we needed, but now we have to be able to sustain them and give, like you said, the time and resource. I think that's going to be our biggest challenge, because our student body is going to continue to change, as we've seen it change over the last 10 years, it's going to continue to change, and for us to be able to continue to do that. That is a major challenge for us. That's what I see. It was, became evident with the visit to the different schools, not just at Spotswood, but at each and every one that we saw. What was going on in those classrooms was phenomenal, and you could not distinguish a child with disabilities versus another child. They were, you know, they were just children, learning from one another and from the teacher. But how do you sustain it? That's, I think, is going to be the biggest challenge.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Ms. Grant.
Just to add on what Dr. Meyer was saying, we did add positions last year, and very grateful, but we're not fully staffed yet, what we need. And I think that should be our priority, to make sure that we're meeting all of our needs, as far as all of our special services that we want to give. I know that we're definitely short on school social workers still there. We definitely have a big demand for those, and we need to expand some of the programs that we have already, to include offerings to all of our students, and make actually a bigger difference than we already are. So, I think that's my priority.
Mr. Braswell.
Ms. Flannard, I'm going to ask a loaded question. We were at the Spotswood Elementary School Tour, and I asked the principal, "How many teachers do you need?" Obviously, we've made great strides in terms of our numbers from last year to this year. And of course, we can't have everything that we want, but what are the numbers of additional teachers or FTEs that we need in instruction to make a significant impact on our, in our current state?
It is a loaded question, Mr. Braswell, but that's okay. I appreciate that, because it really does show where your heart is in regards to supporting children, so I thank you for that. I would love to see, to be able to have a mass specialist at every one of our sites, and we don't, and so I would need additional FTEs. Currently, right now, our mass specialists are funded out of grants. They're either Title I, Title II, or Algebra readiness. There are no locally-funded mass specialists at all. And that was because of our current state of economic situation years ago, and so would certainly like to be able to add a significant amount more mass specialists to... Handing me some cheat sheets is what just happened right there, which I appreciate. Well, I'm just, here I am. So I would love to have additional mass specialists at all of our schools, which you're talking double-digit numbers, just for those FTEs alone. At the elementary level, I would like to have additional reading specialists. You mentioned Spotswood Elementary, and they do have additional reading support services, because they are a Title I school. But our non-Title I schools may have more students than Spotswood does and has less reading support staff in order to help support those reading needs. So, without throwing a number around, I'd probably say in the range of five. I would like to have four or five additional reading specialists to support those early literacy skills, to make sure that we can work on that alone.
And I appreciate the number, because you did an excellent job in marshaling the resources that we had, and targeted it to an effort to make significant improvement. And so, the problem that I see is, we, in order to do what Dr. Baker was saying in terms of being restorative, we have to have enough resources that you can use to affect the effort. So, thank you.
I just wanted to add to that, too, that Ms. Flannard and all of our staff, when we go out to sites, and that, we expect that to be every week and throughout the week, engaging with principals and other staff members, and a couple of other things that I know some will be alluded to at other parts of the presentation, but we want and expect our teachers to continue to engage students in the use of technology for learning. Yet, we are still limited, in terms of school by school, how many staff can actually support that integration. And I know that that has come up frequently in my interactions with principals and staff, is to have more onsite technology support, and a variety of levels. And then, earlier, when Ms. Richardson was talking about our special education needs, though we haven't had an increase in the overall, we are finding that the increases that we are having, and I think we've shared this before, are such that the amount of resources we needed, need to actually support those students and those needs are exponentially greater. And so, I'm also seeing that we have principals and schools that embrace the idea of, "I would love to have that program here. I'd love to serve those students here." And having that kind of attitude and that willingness to embrace challenges is wonderful. We need to be able to honor that by providing additional resources for them to support those specialty programs.
Mrs. Blaylock.
Well, I guess it's the big kickoff for each board member to share, you know, kind of how we want to jump into the budget season for yet another year. And I have the privilege of kind of having some history here now. And the first year, if you remember, was right before 2008, which was quite different than every other year since. And, I mean, it's pretty easy to think what the top priorities should be. Resources, number one. I like this night, because as much as we deal with and do on an everyday basis, just as you all do, this is really why we're here, to educate. And it's a very good reminder that this is why a school division exists. As much as we love everything else, and I can't say enough about the programs, I mean, just ask Mr. Braswell about the Fine Arts Program, sitting through the veteran ceremony at Thornburg Middle School. I mean, just, there's so much to brag on, but this is why you're here. So I would say, as we kick off the season, I think of last year being my first year to really start seeing it come together again. And boy, did that feel good. So as much as we're all going to want everything, it was whoever said earlier, it was like putting us in a candy store, and we all wanted the candy, but Dad had so much money in his pocket? That's true, because everybody knows what I'm going to ask for, and everybody on this panel has something they're ready to ask for. And we all have to ask Dr. Baker that, and he is entrusted to make the right decision for the children of this county. I can sit here and say, from Mr. Uppercoe at that end, head of the fleet, transportation, everything that makes this place run, down to our human resources, our finance team, our special service team, our instruction team, to our clerk of the board and our superintendent has my full trust, 100 percent. Period. Every one of you do. I hope to support you this year, and I hope to be an asset to you, and I'm sure we'll get on your nerves at times, wanting some things that we can't do. But if we all keep the children first, and we keep the education first, at the end of the day, we're all going to be okay. And as much as y'all have fancy quotes, my favorite person to quote is Kiefer Smith, who was my daddy, and he said, "When you're doing something good," he always says, "Keep on with the keeping on." So I would suggest for y'all to keep on with the keeping on. We'll be okay.
I have something, but Mr. Laura? Okay. Well, I wanted to say, I'm thrilled about putting our scope teachers and our reading specialists in the middle schools back to their positions, doing what they are specialists in. So, that helps all of the others. I feel that way. Our kids on both ends of the spectrum are getting, our higher students, our students that need a little bit more support, they're all getting what they need to be better students. I also noted, this is with only 28 percent of the school divisions across the state being fully accredited, and we are one of those 28 percent. We are definitely, that's not a very big number. So it is definitely something that you and your staff need to be very proud of, because we are, we are in the few.
Ms. Shelley, I really, I love what you just said. I wish I could acknowledge it as 100 percent true. Unfortunately, the, we are, because we have two schools that remain in the new partially accredited, then we are not one of those 28 percent. So the 28 percent don't have any schools that are designated as partially. They are all fully. Now, we were within a few percentage points in two content areas of being, I don't know what we would make it, 30 percent? We almost added our contribution to that, and I'm quite confident that we will be one of that still probably smaller number a year from now. But I did want to make sure that I clarified that. However, I'm not sure that many can, school divisions can boast of the level of turnaround in one year, in terms of the percentage of our schools that improved to be fully accredited. Basically, out of 10 schools, nine of those 10 are no longer accredited with warning. Well, actually, 10 of the 10 are not accredited with warning, nine of the 10 are now fully accredited. So I do want to give a lot of credit to our staff across the board and our students.
Well, with what you said, then I'm going to look at this number again, and I'm going to say, the state has some numbers to look at. With only 28 percent of the divisions fully accredited, something is not right. So, we are right there, and I'm still very impressed and still very proud of our school division for what we have done and what you guys have all done, because, like you said, we've shown a tremendous gain. But the state has something to be looking at with that. So, thank you all for the instruction for what, the presentation. And Mr. Laura, you do have one more comment.
Yes. If Mr. Blain was here, he would probably remind us that no matter how old we live to be, you only go through the third grade once, and if you miss that instruction in third grade, it'll impact you for the rest of your life, and the same go through for every grade. You're only a teenager for four years, and what you accomplish or fail to accomplish will, in many instances, define how you're going to live the next 60 years of your life. That is the business that we're in. There's no do-over in this business. We're serving a higher calling, the future of our community, and quite frankly, we can't do anything about LA, or New York, or Chicago, but we can do something about Spotsylvania. And we have a duty to fight for our kids, because there's no do-over. I want to finish this comment by asking Mr. Wolf a direct question. When you were, during your presentation, there was one slide that intrigued me, and I want to give you the opportunity to comment further on that, and that was strategic support for schools. Particularly, you talked about intentional instructional coaching, and also provide tiered support for schools. How do you go, as a practical matter, how do you go about determining the, who needs instructional support, and how do you go about providing tiered support? You can combine both of them, if you wish.
Sure, sure. The, I will share with you, Mr. Laura, and members of the board, that a tiered support for our schools would not be, would not have been accomplished without many of the people who are sitting here before you, as well as the individuals who are sitting behind me. We, as an instructional department, as an HR department, as a finance department, collectively believe in what we do and the processes that we go about it. So when we say that there's tiered supports for our schools, those schools who were accredited with warning last year, our 10 schools, we designed a, more or less, a spreadsheet of who's going out to that school, what's the coaching support that's taking place. So, if you had those 10 schools that were there, they got three visits a month from administrators who were over here, not at one time, three separate visits, so that we would go out and check in on the school. So, myself, if it was a secondary school, elementary, if it was Ms. Flannard at the time, so we would go out, as well as the members, and I know they're sitting back there, and I'm not going to look at them, but they were instrumental in making sure that we went out there and worked with our principals. But we also had schools that we just wanted to keep an eye on at the same time, because of where they were at at that point in time, so they got two visits. And those schools that were high flyers at that time, they just need to make sure that they know that they're not forgotten. It goes back to a lot of freeing up those reading specialists in scope. You have to make sure that you're hitting both ends of the spectrum. So we, as a team, came together, because we have, like I said, in HR, we have a number of different principals, individuals who were principals before, and know what it's like to support a school. There's a number of different principals inside of instruction at the same time. So, we all collectively came together to figure out how we could support our schools. But we also turned around our training for our principals, and whatever came to us, and we had some professional learning that came from the state, required professional learning that came from the state. But our philosophy is, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and we didn't just turn it around for one or those 10, we turned it around for all of our schools, to make sure that we collectively, as Dr. Baker had mentioned, collectively move that ship as one and together. So that's that tiered support in a very long and drawn-out answer that you probably didn't want.
No, no, actually, I wanted to hear what you had to say, because what it tells me, and correct me if I'm making the wrong assumption, is that when you identify a need, and I mean you in the generic sense, when a need is identified at a particular school, at a particular class, that you make resources available to that individual class or that individual school. That's how the program works. Thank you very much.
And the good news is, that's just instruction. I know that we have some, I talked at the beginning about all the different budget influences and themes, and so I think at this point, Ms. Gaines and other members of staff are going to take you through another set of information and figures.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. In looking at your binder, at the first few pages, you'll basically see a table of contents of your binder. I was asked a question when I arrived today, are we planning to cover all the material in this binder? This is going to be a resource that you will use throughout the 2017 budget process. So if you look at the table of contents, we're basically looking now at budget influences. So you do recall, we had the eRIP program this year, and one of the main things we wanted to emphasize is that we had 106 individuals to participate. When you look at that number, basically 78 percent was from instruction. And what I'm doing right now, and it's referring to a PowerPoint that was just provided to you by Mrs. Stombach. Uh-huh. We're going to do both. Ms. Blaylock, we're going to do both. So when you look at the eRIP analysis here, you'll see 106 did participate in the plan. When you look at replacement of total salaries and benefits, it was about 6.8 million. So that means that the original salary was 9.4. So we did save 2.6 million. Before the individuals retired, the average step was 25. Based on the replacements coming in, the average step replacement is 7.6. So you can kind of see how we were able to actually exceed our goal. We were expecting to save 1.5, and we actually saved more, 2.6. But the main reason why we were able to save more is because that incentive payment was... we were able to save more is because that incentive payment was made in '15, not in '16. So the question might be asked, Ms. Gaines, are we going to be able to do this again in 2017? Right now, I'm not confident at this stage that we can, because when you really look at the interest that came in, it was lower than what was anticipated. We had 400, 545 people who were eligible. We were estimating 174. Only 106 took the plan. So with that being said, but however, we'll continue to look at it month by month, okay? Also, if you look in your binder, you will see a tab. It says Financial Services, HR. If you can turn to that tab for me, and I've given you a one page in your binder that speaks to the eRIP, where you can kind of see the average step per category. And it's behind a tin piece of paper. Again, this is notating that we did have 106 to participate in the plan. So let's look at the next item that has happened in fiscal year 2016. Dr. Baker had given myself and Mrs. Colbert the responsibility of creating an employee compensation focus group. So we had about 21 individuals who came together four times over the last few months, and when looking at the goal of the group, we had three objectives. Number one, to compare pay scales, which we have 115 of those. Number two, to do comparative pay analysis with other surrounding school districts, and then to develop an employee compensation proposal for future years. We did explain to this particular committee that it was not going to be a one-year committee, a two- or three-year committee. At the bottom of the slide, you can see the composition of the committee. Based on work that was done by the committee, they basically talked about burning questions. They also did a survey. So the number one recommendation or suggestion coming from this group is to determine the feasibility of eliminating frozen steps, and I'll share with you in a moment why that was their recommendation. Number two, they said develop suggestions for encouraging the Board of Supervisors to invest in a revenue sharing agreement. Because when you talk about making sure that we have items in the budget based on what is needed by our students, it needs to be sustainable and feasible. When you look long-term, the only way the school board can really be successful in looking three or five years out is to have an understanding between the state and the locality of what funds we will get. So that made sense. Number two was their recommendation. Number three, they talked about looking at providing a bonus to those individuals who work in a critical shortage area or work with at-risk students. They also talked about scenarios to reinstate the administrative intern program, which we've heard board members make comments as well, and then determine the feasibility of surveying employees to determine their interest in developing a health insurance opt-out plan. And what that basically means, we could have individuals who make a decision to come off of our health insurance plan because they can get insurance with their spouse, and we would give them a certain amount of monies each month. This is something that the county does have.
Clarification on something. When we're talking about the, I like the idea of a bonus for critical shortage areas. Are you talking about everything across the board in the county, everything from a transportation bus driver to a teacher, or is this just strictly for in-classroom employees that you, that the committee talked about?
Ms. Colbert's going to respond to that.
Um, part of the discussion of the committee, the recommendation originally stemmed from those critical shortage areas that are hard to fill in the classroom as far as teachers are concerned.
Okay. Okay, so that basically shows you the recommendations coming from that group. If you look behind the next document that's in your binder, you will see about an eight-page proposal that we just wanted to share with you. We're not going to go into the details. Just want to provide you with a reference point, so when we come back at the next meeting. And we also had some assistance from Hanover Research. So I'll give you a time just to flip through that. It's a total of 10 pages. We want to give it to you in advance, Ms. Graham, so you can review and ask questions at the next meeting. It's in your binder. It's called Employee Compensation Focus Group. Okay. That's okay. So when you look at the next slide, and if you look in your binder, you have Pay Scale Study Update. What we did was we looked at all 115 of our pay scales. In doing so, we were able to see that we have 88 pay tables that are non-teacher-related that are frozen, 88. We also were able to see that the other 27 are not frozen, and those are teachers, because at every step on the teacher pay scale, from step 14 to 37, there's an increase of about 2.5%. Between 0 and 13, it varies. But the teacher pay scales, none of them are frozen. Also, when you look at the number of actual steps that are frozen, 956. The average step increase for teachers is 2.04. The average percent increase for non-teachers is 1.25, and then for all staff, 1.45. So one of the things we've always attempted to do is whenever the school board in the last six or seven years has given a pay raise, you always have made an attempt to make sure it includes a COLA. Because if you don't give a COLA, you have on average between 130 and 160, 160 individuals who would not receive a pay raise at all. So that's the rationale behind why I believe the Employee Focus Compensation Group is recommending that we eliminate those frozen steps. And we can eliminate that either with a 1% or 1.5, and we'll get more in details with that when we get to the school board budget discussion. We want to get your input. So in your binder, you basically saw about four pages where we analyzed every single pay scale. Most of the frozen steps go from 15 to 19, 20 to 24, all the way up to 37. So the other thing we wanted to make some emphasis on, we're not always looking just to find out what the needs are. We also want to make sure that we're being cost-effective. As you know, the school board has given the school board the responsibility, or the staff the responsibility, to implement a new system. The current system that we have will no longer be supported by the current provider in the next year or two. So we have put out an RFP. We did receive a total of seven responses, and we will be bringing a recommendation to the school board December the 14th. So between now and December 14th, we'll be able to give you all more additional information in terms of the vendors that we're looking at and the reason why. The slide that you see before you basically shows you the different components of the new finance and HR system. This system is not only going to help us be more effective, but more efficient. And then in your binder, what I've given you is the timeline, and you'll see we're scheduled to come to you December the 14th. So we believe ultimately, by implementing the system, at some point, we will be able to have potentially some cost savings. At a minimum, we'll be able to do things more efficiently. The other area that we know that is a budget driver, we talked a little bit about salary increases, but benefit rate increases. When you look at where we are right now with the VRS trend, you can see that basically is going up every year. Also, when you look at health insurance. So by way of next steps, we will be getting the governor's budget December the 21st. When we receive his budget, we'll be able to find out what VRS rate he's predicting, and then for the health rate, we will be getting a number from Anthem. So when Dr. Baker presents his budget, January 19th, we'll be able to bring that data back to you. So these are things that are budget drivers, and they haven't changed. They basically make up almost 30% of our budget. So that takes you to composite index. Why is the composite index important? It is basically one of the drivers that's used when the state is predicting their budget and allocating their budgets to schools. We basically fall in the blue area, and you can see most of the school divisions fall in that area of 132. Now, in your binder, because I know we're asked this question each year by the various officials, how do you calculate composite index? And it basically consists of three main items. You're basically looking at your true values. You're looking at your real estate values and your gross income. For FY1718, based on information that we have received from the State Department, our composite index is slated to go up. Now, what does that mean? When your composite index goes up, that says that your locality has the ability to pay more. So based on the current budget, that means we would lose $900,000 in state funding, and the desire would be that that $900,000 will come from the locality. So that's a discussion that we'll be having when you all begin to prepare your budget. Also, in your binder, I've given you what has occurred with other school districts. Of the 132 school district, 94 of them did decline. 36 of them, like us, did go up, and two remained the same. Two remained the same. The next item, in looking at the adopted revenue budget, you'll basically see a lion's share of our budget for the last several years has been monies coming from the state. So where you see that $127.3 million, that means if everything remains the same, this number for next year would be $900,000 less, barring any changes. You'll also see federal funds make up about 5% of our budget. We don't anticipate that changing, but we are hearing some good news in terms of sequestration being waived, so that helps us. In looking at the county, that $116.4, that's about 40% of the budget. Other funds, Medicaid and Fleet, 11.8, and then loans and bonds, 18.6. So that's our budget for FY16. What we're hopeful is that because we're going into the first year of a biennium, that first year, we should see a substantial increase. I'm hopeful, anywhere from 7 to 9 million. We need that and much more, okay? Another key component of your revenue projections relates to your average daily membership. This relates to the number of kids that are enrolled in your school and how long they stay enrolled. If you look at the impact for FY16, we were projecting we were going to have an ADM of 23, 374. That number came in less than what we had predicted. So this year budget, we are slated to lose 1.3 million, and that's only against basic aid. If you apply this methodology to all other state-funded accounts, we would lose a total of 1.7. So that means the monies that we came in for eRIP, we were estimating 1.5, we saved 2.6. That 1.1 has already been absorbed by the lower ADM coming in than what we had projected. So it is a good thing that the eRIP came in higher, because if it had not, then we would be in a situation, we would have to make cuts. So this is a good thing that we had that eRIP program. When you look at the expenditures, as Dr. Baker alluded to earlier, everything that we do, 84% is salaries and benefits. The other 16% is non-compensation. As we look forward to '17, we don't see that changing, and that has been the case for at least the last 10 years or more that I've been here. So that's a huge budget driver. Another key budget driver, when you look at salaries and benefits, is going to be special ed. If you look at that budget of 288 million, just take a moment to look at the trend. From 2010 to 2015, that number easily has gone up by almost $4 million. We have a great special education program, and with that being said, we do great by our students, and it costs you more. When you look at some of the areas that are really growing exponentially is the autism area, and this is a mandate that we are required to fund, but it is a budget driver. So you'll see quite a bit more information on that one. FTEs, you can kind of see what those are. Dr. Meyer had alluded to the 60 additional positions only in the adopted budget. Since then, we've added more positions because they are needed. And now, what that does, that brings us to where we are with our studies. You may recall, last year this time, the school board had charged staff with doing six studies, and I am so pleased to say we have completed all of them. The most recent one that Mrs. Blaylock had asked us to do was dealing with the activity buses. We're going to bring that to you tonight. We've already talked about the pay scale, so now we want to bring your attention to the athletic fees. So look in your binder. You're going to see a tab. It says update on other various studies, and the first one that you will see is athletic fees, and I want to commend Ms. Stombach for working with various school districts to gather this information. And I'm just going to give you the executive summary. The executive summary is, of all the school divisions that we surveyed, 132, 56 responded. Of those 56 that responded, only 10 of them are still charging an athletic fee. And when you look at the athletic fee that's being charged, it is basically, we are still in the highest. So the question becomes, as we prepare the budget, the goal would be to either at least reduce it again from $75 to 50, or determine if we can sunset it in its entirety. So those are some things we'll be looking at. So you'll basically see the athletic fee. The next one we want to do is contract lengths, and I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Colbert.
Good evening. Just again, as Ms. Gaines has done, I'll provide you a high-level overview of the studies that were completed through the Office of Human Resources. The first we'll look at are the contract lengths. When we began this process, we surveyed three additional school divisions along with ours, and we found that the contract lengths and the positions were fairly comparable across those divisions. We've selected those divisions because they were alike in size and demographics to Spotsylvania, and at this time, we don't have any additional recommendations in terms of our contract lengths. As we move through to the next set, when we look at our hourly rates, again, looking at the hourly rates, we surveyed a total of seven school divisions. Again, looking at some that were comparable in size, as well as some that were surrounding our area. Overall, in terms of our hourly rates, what we were providing our staff was comparable. Two budgets back, we made some adjustments in terms of our groundskeepers. Also, keep in mind, as we provide salary increases across the board, then there are adjustments to our hourly rates. So we are at this time making no recommendations for our hourly rates. As we move to the next set, in looking at substitute rates, this is an area that was a priority for the board on last school year, and so you all are commended for approving some adjustments in those rates, and that has made us more comparable to our surrounding divisions in the majority of those areas as far as substitutes are concerned. So at this time, we don't have any additional recommendations for substitutes. And then finally, we'll look at the stipends. We provided updates from Hanover, Stafford, and Arlington, again, looking at them and being similar to size. We did make some adjustments to stipends in the most recently approved budget. We do recommend that we continue to move forward with doing what's necessary for the academic and athletic stipends to restore what had been reduced in previous budget years. So at this time, unless there are any questions, then that wraps up that.
Refresh my memory, we put some of the stipend back for, for those that we just, you just spoke of. How much, was it 10 more percent? How much is left to restore them to where they were before the recession?
In FY15, we put back 10%.
That's right, so we need 10 more.
FY16, we did 5%. So now, to make them whole, we need 7%, and that'd be about $80,000.
Okay, thank you.
I also want a caveat on the stipend issue. It's not just an issue of making our coaches' stipend pay competitive, but it's also a desire to incentivize coaching so that our teachers are actively engaging in those activities. Recent incidents express the great need for teachers being involved. for teachers being involved in extracurricular activities. And we need to make sure that we incentivize for our teachers' benefits, that we need them not only in the classroom, but we need them on the ball fields with our students after, while they're participating in extracurricular activities. So, that's a very important piece of why it should be important or high on our list to make sure that those stipends are restored. But also, in terms of the athletic fee, the idea of retiring that fee is a, and sunsetting it once and for all, is important to me because the fee not only is oppressive, but it prevents students from having an opportunity to spend time with our teachers, doing the things that what I call are didactic. The laboratory of life is being able to be a part of something bigger than yourself and also sharing and showing leadership by participating in extracurricular activities. We don't want any obstacle to be an impediment for our young people to be able to do that. So, I mean, obviously, I've been talking about it for years. I'm very passionate about those two things because I believe that coaches have a great impact on our students and their lives, but also students that have an opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities. And we're not just talking about athletics. We're talking about band. We're talking about clubs and a variety of other things. That enhances their educational experience. Our schools are not testing centers, they're schools. And the essence of learning is more than just sitting in a classroom. It's being a part of an organization and learning how to cooperate with other people. Thank you.
Ms. Gaines, you mentioned seven percent to come back to be whole. What would be the difference if you were to make that ten so that we start to gain a little bit more to be more competitive?
Okay.
Because you look at how we compare to Stafford and Arlington, we're at the bottom of the totem pole in every one of the graphs. And I think we need to gradually start to move forward, and at least that we look at it as to what the cost would be. I know we're going to have other needs, but at least let's look at the cost.
Okay, so we'll definitely look at that, Dr. Meyer.
Anybody else? And then I'm going to go back to the substitute pay because that's been one of my... We still are kind of far off away from some of the other divisions that are nearby us. And I know that we have lost some substitutes to other divisions because people... I see somebody at my school. I just want us to be more competitive. I'm not saying that we need to be as high as them right now. I would like to see us be there at some point. But even if we could go from eighty to eighty-five or ninety for our substitute pay, a daily rate for our degreed, and then for our long-term, we want to make sure we've got good people in our long-term positions. So, I think bringing that up a little bit more is important to make sure that we are getting the people we want into those long-term positions because they are the teacher for a little while, while the teachers are out on medical leave. So, I would just please take a look at those and see what the change would be for some type of an increase on those, please.
We'll definitely do that. Okay. So, when we look in at the other study, activity buses, we'll hear more from that particular study under Dr. Upperco. And right before we lead into Dr. Upperco, I did want to make reference in terms of where we stand. In looking at E-RIP, we were projecting to save about one point five. We actually saved two point six. So, we were in the good by one point one. When our ADM did not come in as predicted, we actually lost. So, one point seven minus one point one, we're in a hole right now by six hundred thousand. So, the question becomes, how will we fill that hole? Two areas that we're looking at. One area is savings from gasoline and also savings that we see in the utility maintenance department. So, with that being said, there's no additional funds at this time. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Upperco.
Madam Chair, if I could ask a question, Mrs. Gaines. I noticed on the composite index figures, and you're using the ADM, what, twenty-three, eight? Or twenty-three, three? Is that the budget figure or is that DOE's figure?
We're using our figure.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Upperco.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the honorary doctorate. Those that know me well know that it's only honorary. Madam Chairman, members of the board, and my colleagues, Dr. Baker, I appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. I would like to review very quickly some information that I've already sent to you, but I know the volumes of information that you get. You may not have had an opportunity to really sit down and review this. But as you recall, Mosley Architects was selected by the division to develop and conduct a comprehensive study which would further align and coordinate our capital improvement plan with our strategic plan. You may recall that typically at this time of year, I would be presenting to you the new CIP. But because of the importance of this effort, we're going to delay the process a bit to make it more thorough and to make it a better process. Specifically, I'd like to talk about the first phase of the planning the planned study, which includes a ten-year student enrollment projection, the development of a GIS student database, and the analysis of school program capacities at each school. Because it's so thorough, because it's taken us time, but it's good time, we have asked that the CIP schedule be extended. Mosley Architects, therefore, will make its summary presentation of the Phase One data collection effort at the December fourteenth meeting. And the CIP twenty-seventeen, twenty-twenty-one will be presented at the January twelfth meeting for you and then for your approval, hopefully at the January nineteenth school board meeting. In reviewing preliminary data, I would note that it appears that the ten-year student enrollment projections for the division that are provided by Mosley are lower than the projections that were initially devised by the county planning office last year. At some point in the near future, Mosley will work and talk and meet with the county planning department to compare their methodologies. At present, these projections are being fine-tuned. They will be included when we present the CIP to you at the date I just mentioned. They're very important, and we want to make sure that we get those as right as we can. Based on the program capacity analysis at each school, there does appear to be opportunities to repurpose some existing space, especially at the high school levels, and that could better meet our current program needs. Consequently, the feasibility and nature of possible renovation efforts, including those at Cortland High School, are actively being reviewed. In addition, we continue to examine the possibilities and the desirabilities of establishing specialty or magnet schools at certain high schools. That is continuing to be explored by both the instruction and the operations departments. So, I wanted to give you that overview, and it gives us a good segue into a comparison of the FY fifteen and FY sixteen enrollments as of September thirtieth. So, as you turn in your booklets, you can see that we actually, this year in 2016, on September thirtieth, have a total of about one hundred and thirty-nine fewer students than we did the preceding year. And the obvious question is, well, how come? We know that there's development coming in the county. Why is this? And it's actually a relatively simple answer. Last year's senior class was one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine students versus this year's kindergarten, which was only fifteen hundred and sixty-five students. So, more students have left than entered this year. It's a difference of about two hundred and four students, to be exact. But you'll also notice that what continues to grow is the pre-K special education population. And of course, Head Start and VPI programs are capped, but they're included in that total as well. So, as Mrs. Richardson kind of alluded to earlier, we are seeing growth in that particular population. And that population is very difficult to anticipate the growth of. We are seeing many students or many parents now moving to Spotsylvania that either are seeking IEPs or have IEPs in place already. I think in a certain respect, we may be victims of our own success from a financial standpoint. So, Ms. Richardson, I take my hat off to you and your folks. But there are implications from a budgetary standpoint, and much of the implications actually are realized when you look at some of the transportation costs that we have accrued over the last few years as we've expanded our programming. We mentioned the autism program, and that is one that has expanded. And we want to provide for all of our students. I just bring this up because there are some things that we have to work out in order to do that. And one of them is a serious transportation issue as we attempt to meet the needs of all of our students. I would also like to say that I am blessed to work with people that are fantastic. And what I'm going to do, rather than have you be forced to listen to me, is I'm going to call my directors up by appropriate category and let them, those that are in the trenches, really talk to you about where we are and what their needs will be. And I'm going to start with this gentleman here, Mr. Kenny Forrest, who will talk about our transportation situation. And without further ado, Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Upperco. Good evening. Yeah, as we consider the current year, I would tell you that our greatest challenge and frustration has been the shortage of drivers for our operations. And we've been working hard to recruit and retain drivers. We are offering paid training. We've increased the wages for our attendants, and we've offered a perfect attendance bonus. For the first time, we hosted a job fair in October, which attracted twenty-three individuals that came through the door and expressed an interest. Of those, we have seventeen that are in the process, somewhere in the process of getting qualified to become a driver. So, we felt like that was very much a success. We've done some radio spots to advertise our needs. We have a slide on the education TV channels. We've had our Help Wanted buses out at ballgames. We've also done public address announcements at our ballgames to let people know our need. And we've been to community outreach functions where we've talked to folks, let them know what our needs are, and handed out... We actually have business cards that are Help Wanted for bus drivers that we hand out to, again, to show our needs. So, I feel like that we're working hard to get folks interested in driving and serving us in the area of transportation. But we have a ways to go, and we just need to continue to be aggressive and to be creative in recruiting drivers to Spotsylvania County. All right. The slide that you see now is the average annual fuel cost per gallon. And I would tell you that at this time, and for a while now, fuel has been trending in our favor. When you look at the averages over the years and most recent years, and look at 2012, thirteen, the average fuel cost was three dollars and twenty-one cent for the year. And when you look at the current year, 2014, sixteen, we've been averaging a dollar and sixty-nine. So, obviously, that has played well in our favor, and that's a dollar and fifty-two cent down from where it was at the highest point in most recent years. But obviously, the fuel market is a very volatile market, and it's very hard to predict and very hard to plan a budget for. It just takes one world event to change the fuel prices as we've all seen throughout the years. But right now, we're trending very well with the annual fuel costs. And there's a graph, again, that just kind of demonstrates over the years. We had a peak there in 2008 where it went fairly high. But on average, that was a peak for a short period of time. But when you look again towards the 2012, 2013, it held pretty steady there for a while. But again, at the end there, you see where it comes back down in our favor. The administration asked us to go back and look at the activity buses. And from what I understand in years past, we used to operate activity buses for the middle school and high school, where the buses would go by the middle school, pick up those students, and then go to the high school and grab those and then go throughout the county distributing the kids after their activities. When we looked at the estimated costs as we used to run the activity buses, the cost was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do it the way we were operating in the past. If we were to separate out the middle school from the high school and put the middle school buses on... Middle school students on separate buses, you'd almost have to double that expense to offer that service. The way we ran the routes in the past, I don't think would be advisable. From what I understand, we were dropping off pretty much at intersections along the path unless there was a doorstop along the route. I... That's not the way we operate daily with our regular bus routing. And I think potentially, we're putting our students in harm's way to continue to operate like that. I would suggest that if we're going to revisit providing the activity buses, that we may consider doing the designated stops along the path. That's what most of the localities that continue to offer activity buses are doing presently. They will drop off at other school properties within the locality or some additional sites may be county-owned properties such as fire stations or community centers that we would designate locations and drop-off times where parents could have available parking and be there to greet the students when we deliver them. We also looked at potentially just doing a pilot program for Spotsylvania High School and Post Oak. The estimated costs, again, as we ran the buses in the past, would be about ninety-one thousand for that program to run. If we were going to do the school separately with the high school students riding separately from the Post Oak middle school students, again, you could double that cost to about a hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Mr. Forrest, at this time, we're going to allow for some inquiries.
Okay.
We want to congratulate you, being relatively new on board. You are front and center on a hot topic. And I appreciate that you have worked with Mr. Upperco and to at least cost out some various scenarios. As I'm understanding it, we're still not at the stage that we're recommending anything in particular except that I know that my charge to staff has been that we need to consider how things ran in the past. But if we are to bring a recommendation to the board, that we want to bring the... a number of options. And if we believe there is a safer option that's more expensive versus a less expensive option that wouldn't... would be the way that we used to run, and again, wasn't here when we did that. But I do know that, it's my understanding that the... and board members can correct me, but it was 2008 or '09 that the activity buses were discontinued as part of a budget cut. So, we are now six, five, six years in the future. And so, I share that so that Mr. Forrest is not the lamb to the slaughter. It is me.
Thank you. Ms. Blalock.
I really like you. This is... This topic, I'm known as bitter party of one. I have never gotten over it. I try to leave the past in the past. I try to leave the past in the past, but this is one I just can't. I feel, I feel a lot differently than maybe some other of my colleagues on the board at the time, because they voted to cut them. I would have never cut the activity buses. I'll say that to this day, and I certainly am willing to look at maybe stepping stones and smaller options to bring them back. I'm not crazy to say we have so much funding all of a sudden that we can implement this great program anymore, but I am glad that we're to the point, we're looking at it again. And even if it's not in this year's budget, that we hopefully restore something in the future. I want to correct a few things. It really frustrates me to no end when I hear people badmouth how the buses used to run. I had children at Thornburg Middle School at the time that never once used the activity bus. I picked them up. So, I sit behind that activity bus every single day. I sit behind that activity bus, and it was packed, full, packed. I don't even know how they got the math economics kids on it after it picked up Thornburg. It was needed. It was used. After they went away, the after-school programs stopped. There was a, there were several programs in place that were academically based where children would go to teachers to get help. They ended exactly when the activity buses ended, so they could use the activity bus to get them home. When it was cut, when they were cut, I will say, I don't agree, I don't agree with the reasons they tell you. There, I know why they were cut. It is what it is. There were, it was not popular for some people. You do have to have staffing to watch these kids, and that is something you have to talk about. I know we had bus drivers that were very upset, because it was, it was more money for them, and that cut their paychecks. Nobody thought about that. Also, if people didn't like where the kids were being dropped, and I'll use an example of my neighborhood, they would get dropped at the front of the neighborhood, and they would, if you lived in the back, you would have to walk to the back. And a lot of neighborhoods sort of put together a safety watch program where you have the thing in the window or whatever. But there might have been some areas that were walking too far. We could have just changed the stops. And I would say if we're going to look at it again, just change where your stops are instead of putting a program that makes everyone uncomfortable. I will also say, when I was fighting not to get the, unsuccessfully fighting not to cut these, and I was unsuccessful, was I had them pull the discipline and any serious incidents reports on the activity bus as opposed to your regular bus, and the activity bus came out way ahead. There were no serious incidences. The bus activity and the problems on the bus were considered minor. We had nothing serious. However, on the regular education bus, which you would consider the ones that pick you up to take you to school in the morning and the one that drops you in the afternoon somewhere around the 3:00 hour, those were the ones that had some serious problems. And those do drop off at very safe places. So, they were, they were not cut for the reasons they say they cut them. I was there. I know why they were cut, and it was just a popular thing to do, but maybe not for the community. And I think this is where we didn't put the community first. We did not put parents first, and we didn't put the children's needs first when we cut these. So, to have these back is a huge moment for me. And if we can't be, and I'm not saying, I don't want the community to go out and say, "Oh, we're getting them back," because that's not what this is, and that's not what you're recommending, and I get that. But it is high time we talk about it again, and if nothing else, even though I understand we may be looking at taking it step by step, I hope we do some sort of study to maybe go back to those years and see which schools use them the most, because there are schools that would not need them as much as another school would need them. So, it has my full support. I certainly hope that we are able to do this over the next few years, and anything I can do to support the effort, I'm there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Blalock is on target. I'd like to add a couple pieces to that. One, for whatever the reason, and I wasn't on the board, but I was on staff at the time. So, there is a piece to this. We really didn't have any problems on the buses. The concern was, and I would think that if we have a way to restore activity buses in a way that where the students are dropped off when it's dark at night, that we're not dropping the students off at the entrance to the subdivision, and then the people have to walk, you know, that there is a way to provide a safe drop-off point. I like your idea of whether there are community points, you know, buildings, but when we're getting to entrances to subdivisions and a child has to, a student, young lady or young man has to walk, you know, a mile to two miles in to get to the, to their final destination, we want to make sure that those drop-off points are safe and secure. I'm wholly in favor of restoring, if we can restore it at a, at a level that we can have good assurances that the students are in a safe position, safe place, because it's going to be nighttime. And when we get to the spring, no, and we're into different activity. But right now, the season that we're in right now, we're already, 5:00, it's dark. And we have to be able to account, take that into consideration. So, to the extent that this can be worked up, and I'm not opposed to considering or taking a look at the different high schools who have different needs. Like Mrs. Blalock said, some high schools may not even want to go there, because they have other, other ways of handling, you know, what their students need. But you may have a situation like Spotsy High that has, that is unique, and we need to recognize that uniqueness, and to the extent that we can address it, we should. But we need to be able to address it in a very safe mode. The problem that we had in the past was the distance that the students were walking. When you're out in the county on certain roads, you know, those students are dropped off at their driveway. That's not the problem. The problem is not when they're dropped off at the driveway, because they're at home. The problem are the other students and where they have to walk to get there. So, that, that's, we address those concerns. I don't have a problem, because we can give it to them in a safe manner. And I think that's what our objective needs to be. And whatever the cost is, that, you folks will have to determine that.
Mr. Forrest, I know that Mr. Laura has a question. I just, one thing that I may be missing in looking at the packet, but we have revised potential costs that show the separating, separating out of middle school students and high school students. Is that right? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, sir.
What I'm wondering is maybe another thing to cost out that would probably be more difficult, because you'd have to get, you would have to get more exact about stops. But what if they were kept together, but the number of stops were increased substantially and an aide was on the bus? I would be interested in some other potential cost-out scenarios, just for some of the things that are coming up tonight.
Dr. Baker, one of the things that I was very familiar with is that the number of stops that we had before, the length of the route was already an hour, so that when you increase the stops, you're increasing the length of the route, which makes the length of the time. So, that may be countermanded by having additional buses and drivers, which increases your cost again. But if we discover the way that we can do it safely, I think that's what we need to be looking at. And I point to one thing that Mrs. Blalock mentioned that is also true is, you know, many of those students, once they know that that bus is going to be there, and they have after-school activities or tutoring, or there are other instructional benefits to the program, it's not just for athletes, it's for others. And I think that benefit needs to be looked at, so we're not just attributing the cost because we're running an activity bus for athletes. This is an activity bus for the benefit of the students and the programs that they would then have access to.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Dr., Mr. Laura.
This is a subject that's dear to my heart. There are no subdivision where I live. There are no subdivision within 20 miles from where I live. So, safety is critical. Now, I'm old enough to remember when in Spotsylvania, we didn't have professional drivers with CDL. High school boys, and I, were given the keys to school buses, and they drove them home, and then they drove in the morning and picked up kids. We don't do that anymore. The world is changing. I will submit to all of you here that we cannot go back to the old days. It's too dangerous. We're not talking about blocks. We're talking about miles. And the, there are three issues that are somewhat related here, and let me put them in this, in a particular order. Stipend for coaches, athletic fees, and activity buses. I will put them in that order. I want to, I almost, I was going to raise my hand with, when Mr. Braswell was speaking, the need to have teachers engage in active school activities is critical. We need to do whatever we can to entice teachers to be coaches, even if they're not expert in a particular sport or a particular activity. We need to make sure that we do everything we can to keep teachers after school, working with our kids, in various active school activities. The athletic fees, I think we all recognize, is something that needs to be dealt with. When it comes to activity buses, I urge all of you, be careful. How, where I live, honestly, you don't want to see a bus full of middle school kids with high school kids going up and down the country roads where I live. You don't want to, I can remember when we had activity buses, and I would see these kids in the rain, because those buses ran in the rain, in the wintertime, walking long ways in the dark. The world has changed. It's too dangerous. I won't recommend it to anyone. And I, I also, I also know that in some of the more urban part of our county, they don't want activity buses. Well, out in Spotsylvania, I suggest to you to be very, think about it, not five times, but six times, seven times. And with all the needs of this division, I would say activity buses should be way at the bottom, not necessarily at the top. I would put stipend and athletic fees ahead of activity buses, and that's my honest opinion about this matter. And my rationale for this is safety.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Ms. Braswell, and then Ms. Blalock. You had something. Oh, okay. All right. Ms. Blalock.
Yeah, I would want to talk about the safety for a minute. If anybody in this room thinks that we can say that they're safe getting on the regular bus, that's just as dangerous. In the mornings, I have a child that goes and catches the bus every day. It's pitch black dark. He goes by himself. He's a pretty small kid. I'm not saying safety's not a concern with activity buses. Not only should it be the top priority of what you do with activity buses, but it's a concern on the regular buses. It's a concern when that child walks inside the building. It's a concern all day, every day, anytime that child leaves their home and becomes part of our system and in our care. Safety should be the utmost priority. So, of course, doing activity buses, safety should be your priority, looking at it, just as it should be when you pick them up in the morning to drop them off at their school for learning, and when you pick them up in the afternoon to take them home from learning, or whether you're picking up for the, they stayed after for orchestra, a tutor, a tutorial program, or a activity that has something to do with athletics, all of it should be safe. So, to say that the child is less safe on activity bus as they would be on the regular education bus, I don't know. We've had some pretty serious things happen. So, safety is a concern, period. We should not single out activity buses only as a safety concern. We should single out safety as an entire concern for the entire division all day, every day, when they're in our care, period.
Thank you, Mrs. Blalock. Mr. Braswell.
Well, Ms. Blalock, I'm a Baptist, and I say hallelujah. We've been talking about activity buses for a long time, and the notion that because there's a safety concern, therefore, we shouldn't do it, the two are not congruent with one another. We can mitigate risk. We can mitigate some of the concerns that we have without throwing the baby out with the bathwater. The activity bus, like you so eloquently said, Dr. Meyer, is that a lot of people have the perception that it's some kind of an athletic resource. And it's, and to be quite frank, it's a academic resource. I could imagine if I lived in the Berkeley District or the Livingston District, and my teacher told me, "I want you to stay afterwards and work with me on your algebra homework," and I live 12 to 14 miles away, I would promptly tell the teacher where to go, because I didn't have a ride home. And it's a very real problem. And we have to, as a school division, be creative in coming up with courses of action that are viable, so that we can provide that resource and that benefit to our children. So, I would ask you, sir, to look at other course of action. When I was running for school board the first time, about six years ago, I specifically talked about a modified activity bus schedule, where we would actually use some of the benefits that the county had in terms of Fred buses, and be able to use chartering of Fred buses and in, for the schools that were kind of in close, like Riverbend and Chancellor and Cortland. But the schools that required longer distances of driving, that the routes would be not similar to the routes that the Fred buses were on, would use school resources for that. But that's just one course of action. I didn't say that course of action was this course of action that we should take, but it's that kind of thinking that we're looking for, so we can determine which plan or course of action meets our needs the best. So, that's just one piece. And the other part that I wanted to say was, in terms of retaining drivers, we have to offer incentives, and I'd like to offer a proposal or something for you to consider. And I call it a cliff vesting proposal. We need to put some golden handcuffs on some of these drivers. And so, right now, we offer them a $50, if I'm correct, dollar a month contribution into their 403B. Say again?
A tax shelter, a new.
Into their tax shelter. Why not say, "Hey, if you stay with us for five years," when we normally cliff vest someone, that we give them something substantially more, something that, that would incentivize them in such a way they'd say, "You know what? Not only do I want to come work for Spotsylvania County, but I want, I'm going to get my five years, so I can get my, my bonus." That's, and it's something that maybe we can do every, you know, you know, for a long-term ability to keep and retain drivers where we don't have to lose them to competition. Just brainstorming, coming up with some ideas, but I just think we need to be creative, think a little bit out of the box, so that we can address some of those concerns.
Thank you.
Ms. Gramps, did you have anything? Okay.
I do have one thing. I love the idea of bringing, of the possibility of bringing back activity buses, but just kind of thinking outside the box, because of the academic piece, not, maybe not necessarily the athletic piece, if, because of the cost, and it is quite substantial, possibly looking at doing it mainly for the academic end of it, and maybe not every day, maybe two or three days a week, and therefore, we might be able to expand it into more than just one school or two schools, because the transportation would be a not, not recurring for four or five days a week. It would be two to, two to three days a week. So, that's just another option that's, that I'm, I've looked at. I've mentioned to Dr. Baker one time, that if it is, I mean, the athletes could, of course, be on the bus, but if it was more geared toward those after-school enrichment and remediation programs, or anything that happens after school academically, then it would be supporting the students to be able to, to participate in those type of activities after school, and it wouldn't have to be every day. Thank you.
I know that there are other items that, that you're going to share, but I, I wanted to say to the board, I appreciate, again, I appreciate, this is information, since I've been superintendent, that we have not brought forth. It has not been within the feasibility realm until now. And so, I'm, I'm excited about the conversation starting back up, or rather, heating back up. But I, but I also think that for the school board, I would encourage you, as we go back to looking at visions of the future, that I think as, as safety also will certainly inform this, the progress of this planning and potential restoration or inclusion in future budgets. I would also say that some of the comments about equity and access, and as we begin to think about what the future of high schools could also look like in our county, I would say that we must begin to expand our vision of providing what will feel more like 24/7 types of access to school. types of access to schooling for our students. And particularly, when we know that we have unintentional disparity in terms of even access to broadband internet right now in the rural parts of our community, that the best place for some of our students to be able to have extended time and learning is at the school building. And so, it behooves us to continue to push forward in our planning of this. So, I thank you, Mr. Forrest. Welcome, if we hadn't said it, welcome to Spotsylvania County. You are fully a part of our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. At this point, I would like to call our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Sean Hockaday, to the hot seat. And we will discuss where we are in maintenance, and where we hope to go on some key issues here. So, Mr. Hockaday.
I promise I know nothing about activity buses before we start.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Sorry.
For current year updates, I believe Ms. Gaines supplied a job with the financial section, and that talks about several of our ongoing accomplishments and challenges. Many are the same, or find ourselves in the same place we were last year at this time. Some of our accomplishments, I'll talk about in a few moments, when we talk about some of our charts and trends here, but it involves updating and trying to better our controls as far as inventory, as well as work order system. Our main challenges are still probably retaining staff that are ones that have been here and served, you know, have their time in and are trained in certain areas. As maintenance evolves, the critical skills are something that's more needed each and every day, and being able to keep those employees working for us is something that's still a challenge. And I'm thankful to HR and finance for continuing to support us in that, and try to find ways to hopefully increase steps in pay, so I appreciate that. The budget trends, you'll see that, especially in the area of fuel oil, we have some savings. On the other hand, electricity has... We're gaining cost. The main reason for that is, the beginning of last spring, we had a increase in electricity through Dominion, and that has set a spike in our cost. On the other end, we were able to gain some benefits from lower fuel amounts, so we made up ground on that end. We will maintain... Continue to make some changes as far as we're... We have some capital improvement projects coming along for us, lighting upgrades. We look in future years to gain even more savings from electricity. Of course, it depends on how fast the increases come as to what our savings will be, but that's the way we're going in, is to continue to stay and try to stay in front of... At least stay in front of what they're going to... The changes that they'll be making in far as pricing. I do want to say that I wanted to be hesitant of... With the fuel oil and electric... Fuel oil and propane and gas, even though at this time, we're at a low, over the last year in fuel oil, we've paid anywhere from $1.86 a gallon to $1.55 a gallon. That's just one, from one October to the next. So, as fast as prices rise or fall, the same thing can happen again, so I'm very hesitant of saying that we'll ride out this whole year with the same cost that we are now. There's a lot of things that vary, weather being one, and anything that happens out of our control, and overseas, of course, changes the price dramatically. The same with natural gas and propane, we've paid... In natural gas, we've paid anywhere from $1.58 to $2.55 a unit, and right now, that's on the way back up. Propane, anywhere from $1.37 down to 72 cents, and that's on the way back up. So, I just want to give you some idea of how much it fluctuates per year, and as Mrs. Gaines keeps us on task of our finance meeting every month, we try to keep her aware of what's going on and where we're at on our budget. So, that gives you some kind of outlook of where we stand utility-wise. One of the other things to discuss is, we put numbers in here to look at our work order This is a little bit misleading, and I wanted to explain this to you. The reason the work order number is down is not just because we're doing less work orders. We... This year, we tried very hard to go into our work order system and basically clean it up. We wanted to get an accurate picture of what the work orders were, what type they were, and be able to run reports as needed to the basis of those work orders, and so on and so forth. In doing so, we found out that everything came in as a work order, and not everything should have been labeled the way it was. For example, you may have had... We may have had a request from a principal that was more of something that should be slated to go into a capital improvement area, not a work order, but yet, it was still counted as a work order. So, we've gone through, I've sat down with staff, and we've made some changes in the way we do some coding. So, next year, when we get to this point, we'll have some more real data. Also in that, we've made an effort to not have any repeat work orders, so that has lowered the number a great deal. The other thing that has lowered that number is, as we go through CIP projects and we make changes, especially in the area of HVAC projects, we not only better the program... Better the area and the quality of air, but we also reduce the number of calls we're making, because those are the calls that we're running the most on. So, if you take a school the size of Battlefield Middle or Lee Hill, and you take 30-year-old heat pumps out of them, it drops our work order loads substantially. At the beginning... It's over a five-year... And just to throw out some numbers, at the beginning, in '11, we had 73 full-time employees. At this time, we have about 70 full-time employees. So, we're... I think we'll find that we're still doing the same amount of work with fewer people that... As we were last year. And that's all I had. Four. In 2011, we had 73 full-time, and today, we have 70. So, it dropped down even lower there at one time, about 68, but we have gained a few positions, but we're not back where we were.
I just noticed that the water is... Budget has increased, but that's due to the rates, not necessarily usage.
It's rates, and also, we have added a few areas of grass that we are watering that we didn't use to, so that's added to it some, but most of it's been the increase in rates, not the usage.
When we go to artificial turf, will by chance, the amount of water decrease, because no longer will we be putting water on the field, but also handling sewage? Because it's treated... We have to... We pay that certain amount for, even though it's 50%, I think.
Yes, sir.
But we're still paying for it.
Correct. There is a difference between what we pay for water sewer and just water. And it's half the cost, as you said. If and when we decide to go to artificial turf, there will still be a fee. We still will be using water, not as much, and mainly because if we go that route, you have to keep the surface cool enough to play on. So, there is some water usage, and it should be a savings on that side of it, if that's what we determined to do at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockaday. Also mention that, as you look at the CIP in the future, you will see the LED upgrades, which will give us pretty big and pretty current bang-for-the-buck kind of changes that we can make. In other words, they pay back within four to seven years typically, so you will see that. You can't see it right now, but trust me, you will, in the new CIP. And now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Craig Greenlaw, who will take you through Fleet Services.
Thank you, Doctor. Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Baker. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight and sit beside the doctor. I'd like to start off a little bit, just to tell you a little bit about Fleet that some have heard and some have not, I think. The real thing at Fleet is making sure that we maintain a safe and reliable fleet. That's the main thing that we do. And the second thing that we try very hard to do is to do that efficiently, effectively, and also to maintain a very high level of customer satisfaction. It's very important to us. So, and we do believe we're doing that, and we're very happy with those results of last year. I know we're kind of... But I don't get to toot the horn too much, so I just want to speak very quickly. Last year, we... In your packet, and you'll see the retail labor rate survey that we do, we use that for a lot of reasons. Obviously, it's to see if we're offering a cheaper product to our customers, and making sure that they're saving money. The one thing that we can do with that, that I think's important, we can take that labor rate, that's the retail rate on the outside, and we can apply that to the hours that we charged our customers over that year. So, we can actually see that by our rate being 30% or so cheaper, we can actually establish that we saved our customers about $574,000 last year. If they were to get the same service and go elsewhere, they would have paid that much more. So, we know that's a hard savings, and we're happy about that. There's many, many other savings that we provide, but that's hard to really put a dollar figure on, but we do... We're very proud, for instance, that the school buses, when they're brought in for our care, they're back in service the same day 97% of the time. That's going to be hard to get elsewhere, so we're very proud of that as well. So, I just wanted to let you know about the numbers and how they ended up last year. We started off this year with a bang. We were very, very pleased to have the buses respond and start up very well for the first day of school, and they've continued to perform pretty well for us. I have to thank you all before I go any further, and I certainly need to thank the citizens of this fine county, because they voted to let us buy some buses, and that has... They have just come in. The first run has just started to come in, and it's going to give us a nice shot in the arm, because taking care of an aging fleet is a lot harder than a newer fleet, obviously. So, I want to make sure. That's really a relief for us, because we're only 19 people strong, trying to take care of a fleet of over 1,000 vehicles. 365 of those are school buses. So, that I... We're all thrilled about that. If you... I don't know what she's got up here. She's showing the rate changes. What... And I want to say this to you, too, so we make this very clear, because the steering committee that I report to, which Ms. Blaylock is on, and Dr. Baker are on, they're voting members, they control rates. I don't. They're the ones that say, "Yes, we can, no, we can't." And I want to make sure that that's clear to you, because we're... I'm anticipating the possibility of asking for a labor rate hike this year. That totally depends on whether you decide to find funds to give increases in salaries. A lot of this depends on the budget process and how it works out, but I thought it would be nice to kind of give you an idea that we don't take this lightly. Our job is to save money, not spend more money. And what this is showing you is that since '10, FY '10, we've only done one labor increase to date. That's what, seven years? But I do anticipate the possibility, but that rate is only 1.32% increase, is what we're talking about. So, we're not talking about an enormous amount of money to my customer, because that's important. So, I wanted to make sure that I put that in perspective for you. But again, I'm meeting with the steering committee in January, and hopefully, I'll have a better feel of where our budget's at and what we do need to go forward with or not. It's possible that I won't have to, but this is something we do every year. Actually, I do it every month. I'm looking at expenses, and our cost does go up. We have a lot of costs, of operating costs, that goes up and down, but mostly up, unfortunately. So... And she's... This is something that I'm very impressed with, and I can't take total... Take all the credit on this. I certainly have been part of it, but you established an internal service fund, and the idea of that fund is to provide superior service and to do it cheaper than anyone else can, and that's what we have done. But you also have to remember that the fund has to try to build a reserve fund. We're very fortunate to have a brand-new facility and have brand-new equipment, state-of-the-art, but the day's going to come where it needs to be either updated, replaced, changed out completely. And it's my responsibility to make sure that this fund, further down the road, has funds to help do that. We don't want to just step back and say, "Oh, where are we going to get the money?" So, I look at that, and I look at the 20-year trends. I'm looking at that all the time, and that's why I may say it's time that we need to do a little labor increase, because we need to maintain what we're putting in the reserve fund each year. And as you can see over here, under the surplus side, this is what has gone in each year, and we have a total of $340,000 in our savings account, so to speak, right now. So, we need to continue to have that grow, because that's not quite enough to sustain replacing all the equipment. But we won't do it all at one time, so it will work out as long as we continue to put funds in there. So, and we're doing that, and I'm very proud of that. We had a very good year last year. You might see the 26 minus, and you might remember, that was our snow, snow, snow year, and that really killed me. So, and I'm happy and ready for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenlaw. Now, we will conclude the operations. Actually, we won't, because there's one more section after this, but I'm going to invite Mr. Keith Nocco, who's the Sedexo Food Service Manager, or Director, excuse me, and also Ms. Linda McGee, who is our division supervisor. And as you know, the two work in tandem to provide us with the first-class food service program. And we'll start with Mrs. McGee, and she will explain something that's complicated, and that's why I'm glad she's here, because if I did it, I don't think you'd understand what I was trying to tell you. Fortunately, we have some greater minds with us.
Not too sure about that, though. Good evening. The paid lunch equity tool was a result of the Hungry Healthy Kids Act of 2010, whereby the federal government required school divisions participating in the National School Lunch Program to increase their paid lunch prices until the school division's average paid price reached a free reimbursement rate minus the paid reimbursement rate on an annual basis. Did I lose anybody? Okay. All right. We're required to do this each year, usually around the month of March, and for the '14, '15 school year, our meal prices needed to be $2.70 on an average. Ours was only $2.60, which would be a 10-cent increase that we could have passed on to the parents. Because of the fund balance that we have in the food service program, we were able to absorb that 10-cent increase, and the parents did not see an increase in meal prices. That has been done for the past three school years, as you can see from the trend. So, from the 2013-14 school year up until this school year, there have been no meal price increases due to the fund balance absorbing the increase that the paid lunch equity tool required. Okay? As far as free and reduced meal eligibility, you can see from January 13... 2013 to January 2015, there has been a steady increase in the number of children that are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. It's an average of 8% to 9% from year to year. The economy certainly is a factor, and the number of children who are currently eligible, and I expect it to continue to go up now, so we have a big change in our economy. Okay? Mr. Nocco?
Hello, everybody. As you can see here, we... By this... Oh, sorry. As you can see by this chart, we started off September a little lower than the... As you can see by this chart, we started off September a little lower than the previous September for lunch, and what we did was, once we noticed the first two weeks that trend going down, we revamped October's menu, added six new items to the children that they had not seen before. We've seen from that time to as of yesterday, an average increase of 742 kids eating more a day than when we started. We are starting something modeling after the Food Task Force Committee. We are starting a menu task committee. It's going to meet monthly. We're having representatives from the elementary school, two from the elementary, one, two from the middle, and one from the high. They'll represent, get the same type of thing that we do in the food task, where the principals represent, pull in the ideas, they'll bring their ideas to the table, and we'll discuss them. Oh, it's up there. Okay, never mind. So, these are some of the things that I've met with great success. The only thing I will say that was, the Asian beef did not really hit the mark as well as I had expected. It is hard to, well, it's hard to do an Asian dish with not having the amount of sodium that they use in the restaurants. So, sometimes the kids are used to tasting a certain way, and we really sometimes cannot hit that target as well as we'd like. So, we're going to switch that to a chicken dish, which has a little bit more spicy heat to it, and we'll give that a shot. Some of the things that we've had, we've been inspected by EcoSure, it's a third-party order to make sure that food and safety were compliant. We actually achieved double goals in our middle school, and the other ones achieved high goals. We've done focus groups already at all, this is, since this slide, we've done focus groups at all seven middle schools. We've done surveys at the middle schools and at nine of my elementary. Future chefs competition this year will be hosting at Cedar Forest. I hope everybody participated last year, that was a great time. Another one? The last slide. Oh. When we did enter the world of social media, we do have a Twitter account, a Spatzy Cafe Twitter account. So, we're going to try to get access to the menus more, a little bit more, just so there's another option for them. We've had, we have 21 followers, so we're storming. And, well, it was more than we have before we started, so I'm looking at it positively. And that's, that's it.
Sir, I just want to thank Sedexo. I don't know how long ago it was, it was a school board meeting, I asked you all to look into hiring our intellectually challenged to have employment. And I remember at the Teacher of the Year Award, I had an opportunity to speak with you, and you shared with me some success we had there. And I want to publicly say thank you. We have some really talented young people that just need an opportunity, and I salute you for that. And any other things that you can do to, you know, encourage or inspire those people to have an opportunity of a lifetime, we are very appreciative of it.
We have actually hired one individual, one gentleman from last year that now works Blackback Special full-time. He's out of the program, but we still maintain his employment a couple of days a week. And it actually was a rewarding experience for everybody in the kitchen. Everybody just really appreciated having those kids come in, see their enthusiasm, and it, whenever you brought up their names, because, you know, we follow up to see how they're doing and make sure, they would get a big, every manager would get a big smile on their face. So, they definitely enjoyed and appreciated the program.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair. Just to comment, because she's never here, and I know the two gentlemen sitting beside her, Mr. Aberco and Ms. Nocco, would agree that, Ms. McGee, you are amazing, fabulous. I've been working with her for years. You do a great job. We just never get her here, so I want to grab you while I can and just really, really tell you how much I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Sometimes it's easy to think about the good old days, but when it comes to food service, these are the good old days. It has never been as good, and I've been a customer of Spatzavania School food for decades, and I've seen a great improvement. So, kudos to all of you, from the superintendent all down, for your support, and what we have today is better than it ever was. So, thank you very much for your job well done. Dr. Aberco, this all come under your leadership, so take a bow, sir.
Thank you. I want some tater tots here shortly.
Ms. Graham has a comment or question.
I say this pretty often, but I really, 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 really appreciate the cookies on our night. They are very, very good, and I must say that I'm a pretty picky eater, and when we ate lunch the other day at the school, I wanted seconds. So, that's pretty good food. And I went to school here for, you know, a lot of years, and I never bought my lunch. I would now buy my lunch.
Everything that you see or everything that you hear comes from the front lines. I mean, obviously, I'm not out there cooking. It's the commitment and passion that our frontline employees and our cafeteria workers have. So, they deserve a lot of kudos.
Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, I did want to mention that with Health Services, you will be approving our new Health Services Supervisor, who's actually also served in the interim role, and really did an outstanding job and continues to do an outstanding job, and that's Alessandra Wilmer, who's better known as Alex. She has not only hit the ground running, but I can't keep up with her. So, want to thank you, and we're looking forward to working with her. And that's it for my operations, unless you have a question. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to ask Mrs. Daniels if she would join us at the table, Communications and Community Engagement. Mrs. Daniels.
Good evening.
Before you get started, I've got board members asking for a little break.
Sure.
So, this, we're, so we're going to just take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come right back. We're almost there. Five minutes. Okay. (pause)
Good evening. I just wanted to give you an update on where we are with Communications and Community Engagement. So far this year, we have improved our grant tracking and increased in a number of submitted grant applications. This is due partly because of the position that you granted last year for the grant rider, and so I'm pleased to share that we've done really well. As of October, we had $732,135.30 requested, and we have received a total of $208,855.65 in funding. So, definitely, this position is, is really helping support.
September, you said?
Yes. So, is that September and October together? Mm-hmm. In September alone, we received $80,020. So, that was the September amount received. So, it's working, so we're very excited about that. The other thing we're working on is we're developing an app that is going to allow parents to get notifications on their phones, and so we hope to launch that in the early part of the winter, January timeframe, so that's coming down the pike. And it should make it easier to get instant communications to our parents. And then, we're also looking at researching ways to streamline and interface our communications. You've probably seen that we've really ramped up the Facebook and Twitter posts. We think that's really important, and we're doing a lot of training with our staff about grants and social media and communication. As far as budget trends, definitely, we're going to see an increased community participation and financial support of specific programs. You're going to see at the December school board meeting, a special presentation will be at that meeting, so I don't want to spoil it for you, but more to come in December on that, with a big community partnership program in place. And then, also, we are going to be looking at ways that, because parents want those up-to-the-minute notifications, that may require more funding, because we may need more programs in place to do that, or people. So, that's, you know, something that we'll have to think about in the future. Future budget requests, obviously, equipment needs or software needs to make these things happen, provide, what I'd like to see is provide stipends for all of our web curators. I think they do a really important part of communication, and they, that's, a lot of the teachers do that on their own time as another duty assigned, so I'd like to give them a stipend. And then, establish a school-based communication liaison to include stipends possibility. That's something to plan down the road, nothing in the immediate future, but something to think about moving forward. And then, also, really big, because, as you well know, Goal Two of the strategic plan is Communications and Community Engagement. It's really important for us to have that benchmark and having a pulse of what our community is seeing, climate survey and things like that. And a big part of that is communications and getting those community partnerships in place. So, that's something we'd like to see happen and how to improve our strategies. So, that's all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Daniels. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that we're going to be coming to that point where Ms. Daniels is going to give you some closing considerations and then opening it up for you to share out feedback and direction. But I want to thank all of our staff tonight that have been here to present. I think this is probably the most comprehensive foundational budget work session that we have had in November, at least since I've been superintendent. And so, we want, just want to make sure, those of you that have played sports, the very first practice is always the hardest conditioning-wise, because you got to get a lot of that running in and a lot of that extra conditioning. So, this is like the conditioning portion to get you in shape for what is always